We have a forum here in Lewisville City Council Agenda. Let's see here, tonight workshop. We have a discussion of consent and regular agenda items, a mobile vendor ordinance update, and an I-35 corporate drive update. And then we'll move into regular session. Council, we'll go ahead and take a look at the agenda for tonight. First up is invocation by myself. Next up is Councilmember Meredith with pledges to the flags. We do have some proclamations and recognitions from traps. So very excited about that. Item D1, public hearing ordinance amending an SUP in order to expand it. Any questions on that one? Two automobile repair minor user. Item F, consent agenda. We have last meetings minutes. We have first amendment to the economic development agreement between Music City Estate and the city of Lewisville.
Oh, is that?
That's Zion.
Okay, so that's not tied in old Music City mall.
No, it's not. It's just the name of their company. This is just dealing with conflict between two provisions on annual grant and the PPP grant.
Item four, third amendment to the developer agreement with Russell Glenn LLC. Item five, acceptance of the 2023 Homeland Security U.S.I. grant. Item six, authorizing the city manager to execute a first amendment to serve Lewisville.
Just to clarify, this does not increase the dollar amount that's being provided to serve Lewisville. It's still the same amount.
It's just accelerated.
Yeah.
That chief operating officer is split between two locations, right?
She is, and 50% of her time is in Lewisville, 50% of the county. I mean, city of Lewisville, sorry.
Other questions? Item seven, supplemental appropriations. This is our annual reset, making sure everything comes over appropriately. Item eight, administrative policy 5.0, section 10, covered applications.
You have a question about this, actually. So per city policy, do we have a whitelist or blacklist of applications?
It's accepted use list. So I mean, that's the terminology.
Okay, so it's more an honor system, you're not allowed to use it to call with it than the certification?
That is correct. On, now what we do, we have the ability to inventory devices, but that is the administrative control.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Item nine, agreement to participate in the TERS 4.
I did talk with Bobby about that, about, I told her that you would probably be there.
I will be.
Okay.
And they will be approved, the county will bring this to their commissioners tomorrow.
I-35 tomorrow's court.
Is that the effective date or is it?
The big thing on effective date is needs to be by the end of the year. So we should be able to, we've worked through our calendars with finance and getting it over to DCA, we should be fine with that as long as it gets approved tomorrow. This has been a long time coming, and we're really grateful for the county's continued support.
Item 10, that's TERS 1, same thing. That is all the consent agenda. Item G11, alternative standard associated with ground mounted equipment standards for Walmart.
I have a quick question about this. So the, I want to make sure that, I know we're working on standards for sure, because these are relatively new, we can handle that, that makes a lot of sense. Can they, are they going to be able to claim grandfathered ends therefore if they don't have the screen once we get our standards out, or are the standards going to apply to everybody once they come out? The screening standards.
The standards don't require screens, do they?
Yeah, the standards that are proposed would not require screening of ground mounted equipment, so they would be in compliance.
So what do the standards require?
I don't have them in front of me, and I have to go back and look, but.
Let me just, I'll make the rest more general. So we don't have standards now. We have standards that are in process. The folks that are currently, that have this today, will they be required to meet the standards when they come into compliance with the grandfathered end with those standards?
If they were granted alternative standards, if they were a time period, place on them like the other Walmart, then those would expire, then they have to come into compliance. So it depends on the situation, but just one in general like this one would be in compliance. So we don't foresee, but there's always the ability to ask for alternative standards.
Something maybe, what I'm hearing, so Wing has an alternative, or has a screening standard requirement that we're working through, and we're looking to standardize that screening for that type of deployment. ZIP has a ground mounted equipment. It doesn't have the same standard requirement because it's a different type of deployment. Is that right?
Yeah, they are both a little bit different.
Yeah.
I think we designed the standards to apply to both situations depending on, we work with companies.
It may be difficult to do though.
Right, because their setup is not, they're not taking up a bunch of parking spots. They're going vertical.
Yeah, so the answer to your question, though, is if something comes in and vests beforehand, they do vest, and they have grandfathered rights, this situation with the alternate standard is actually matching what our proposed regulations are going to be on.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. That was a good call. Thank you. You speak Patrick, thank you.
I do, I know you speak Patrick.
I didn't know if they have two different ones, just because they're slightly different in their configuration. So, okay, good to know. All right, that's G11. Any other questions on G11? G12, resolution acknowledging the 2025 Republican Services cost of service rates. Item 13, appointment of the city Lewisville representative on the UTRWD board. Mr. Russell, you're good with this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just making sure. It was almost like it was my idea.
Right?
I might have.
No reason to not share the credit. All right, item 14.
Mayor, this was one of our boards, and we have vetted and we talked about Will Hawk.
Will Hawk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'll have one of y'all make that motion if you don't mind.
Thank you.
I never know how long my voice is getting used to.
All right, and that one's got the funky, you got to move to accept the regulation, then declare the vacancy, and then add the new.
I trust it's all going to be printed out.
Yeah, it's there, it's there. It's the free part. It's the free part.
I've already forgotten, you told me.
Yeah, I know. We'll get there. We got your back, stop.
Mayor, go town right there.
Item H, reports. So we got city council and staff reports, of course, we've got our quarterly investment report. And then workshop if we need to, closed session. We do have two items in closed session tonight, so we'll cover those.
And I understand we have a congratulations. Oh, we can't talk about it, can we? I don't know what you're talking about. Marchelle! Marchelle has.
Ms. Marchelle has an addition to the family? Congratulations. Great job, Marchelle.
She's a woman. I'm sure she's watching.
I'm sure she's watching the YouTube right now.
Superwoman, superwoman.
All right, there's no other questions or comments on the agenda. We'll go ahead and move into item B, mobile vendor ordinance update. Pedro Martinez has got the presentation.
Hi, everybody, council. My name is Pedro Martinez. I'm the sanitary supervisor, and I bring to you today some updates that we will be proposing to our multiple unit ordinance. We are hoping to make these presentations as quick and easy as possible, and if you have any questions, just please let me know. So our role with the presentation and with the changes that we're trying to make to the code is just basically trying to streamline our code and to make it easy for operators to do business in Lewisville. We are trying to remove some of the restrictions in the code that will hopefully make it much more convenient for operators to pull permits and to do business in our city. And also, we're trying to make the code more concise and easier to follow and understand and that's restricted. We are trying also to make it in compliance with current updates and definitions in the state food code, as well as we intend to see an increase in multiple units in the city. Right now, we have feedback from business owners, from the community, from city staff, just helping, asking for help and trying to ease up some of the requirements so we can see an increase in activities in terms of food trucks. I just wanted to bring up a little bit of history about where we are today and where we were when we started looking at the ordinance. In 2011 was the last time that we changed the code. And at that point in time, we introduced some language that is restricted in terms of how long can an operator remain in one location, as well as which locations they can go to within the city. And we also excluded in the definition certain types of multiple units that we intend to bring back. Throughout the course of those years, we came into 2020, and we were looking to make some adjustments to the code. We introduced for the first time the food truck park language in the UDC, as well as we started the food truck park program in our Lewisville parks. And at that point, we had some guidance from this body to try to bring some flexibility to the code to ease up some of the restrictions and to make it easier for operators to do business. We had COVID in 2020, things kind of slowed down in terms of food trucks, and as we were coming out of COVID, we got word that the state was looking to change the code to affect some of the counties in Texas. So we kind of paused on the changes that we're proposing today until we had more information from what the state was trying to do at that point in time. And that definitely had an impact in what we were trying to bring to you today. So the state went ahead and made some changes to the health and safety code, and that impacted directly the way that we do enforcement and permitting of multiple units. Primarily, those two, the two biggest changes, they went and modified the health and safety code, chapter 437, to now include a section requiring municipalities to put up in a registry any local codes that differs from the state law. And before we can go and enforce any deviation from the state code, we have to put it in this registry and wait 60 days until that, until we get the ability to do that enforcement. So just if we stay in tune with what we're trying to do, the idea is to be as close as possible to the state code. And then another new element that they added was that they added chapter 437A, which essentially what it does is it gives the authority to issue permits to two counties in the state of Texas, Dallas County and Tarrant County. And we think based on conversation with our peers, that this was the first step into possibly in the future extend this, the application of this code to the entire state of Texas, which it could have an implication in how we do our permitting and enforcement here in Lewisville. So why are we doing this? Well, as I mentioned before, we're just trying to make the code less restricted and more in line with the state code. And we did so trying to follow guidance provided by this body. We thought about our traditional brick and mortar places. We're trying to make sure that we respect their operation and we don't interfere with their operation, but at the same time allowing for an avenue for multiple units to thrive in Lewisville. Also, we want to make sure that the trucks go to the areas in which are important to us as a city, as well as we want to give the opportunity to those involved in the process an avenue to express support or also concern if that were to be the case. And our intent again is just to look at each case individually and give them the opportunity to do business in Lewisville without much restriction in terms of time and location. So one of the other changes that we're proposing is we want to bring back food trailers. This has been a long demand from operators. And that will put us in the same definition as the state law. So we were just essentially adding one more type of vendor. And then also, we're looking at trying to simplify the application process by creating only three classes of multiple units instead of five that we have right now in the books. And essentially, we're looking at three, going from just the regular lunch truck that doesn't do any prep on the unit, to the full menu, which is our class two. That will be the traditional food truck that can pretty much prepare everything in their unit. And then the third one will be just the limited services push cart, which we see around Lewisville. And those can only sell an approved menu of commercially prepackaged foods only. Again, we're just looking to add just a couple of items to our municipal ordinance, not to deviate too much from the state code, but thinking about this new scenario where we're going to have food units more stationary, we decided to make sure that we have some protections there. And we, any utility connections from the units to potentially a building, the only one that will be more permanent will be the electric connection, and that has to happen in full compliance with the city of Lewisville electric code, building code. And then the rest of the utilities, we're not looking to have any type of permanent connection to the building. The state code requires that those units remain mobile at all time if needed. So again, just a quick recap, we're just looking to introduce small changes to the state code and completely try to be as in compliance with state code as possible. We're not, we're not wanting to do big changes at this point in time. We don't think are warranted. Just going back to those restrictions that we had in our code, we still have, we're working to make some changes, and we're trying to just keep essentially health and safety code language in our multiple unit ordinance. And anything that doesn't necessarily pertain to that, we're just trying to move it into the UDC. Essentially, any multiple unit that wants to do business in Lewisville, have a permit, and they want to remain in one location for up to four hours, we are not going to put additional requirements on them. If they want to be more stationary, if they want to stay at that location for more than four hours, that's when they'll have to move forward and secure especially this permit through our planning department. And none of this will apply to special events. Special event permits will continue to operate the same way that we are operating currently.
And to also clarify and add one more thing, in our research, it looks like best practices has been to separate these locational requirements and put it into your zoning codes, just not something we've done in the past, other than for food truck parks.
And just to build upon what Claire was saying, if the state decides to move and extend the language to all camps in Texas, and all of a sudden we lose the ability to regulate the food trucks, we have this already in the UDC, which will allow us to bring some order to the process. And again, we're not looking to make it complicated. Instead, we're just trying to make it easy for everybody to do business in Lewisville. We have worked with planning and with Richard and his team, just to kind of include the same language that we have for multiple truck parks and make some changes to where a single truck can do the same type of operation if they want to exceed four hours in one specific location within the city. We do have some work to do in this area, but we are, I think we are in the right track and the right partnership, and we wanted to present you with those updates today in case that you have any questions for us. And then, and I think at this point, just to summarize it, Claire, we'll take it from here.
Yeah, so really, primarily what we're doing is just complying with state law. There are a few minor things we're going to be more restrictive than state law. I also think the last time we came to council to talk about, and obviously many of you weren't on council at the time, or some of you weren't on council at the time, but to get direction, when you saw that direction earlier, it was really focused on, we want to make sure people surrounding have, businesses surrounding and neighborhoods have a say if you're going to be permanently there, and that we all look at on a case by case basis. And so I think one of the things we got hung up last time with council was we were trying to create these rules of spacing requirements and notice requirements that were very complex, that were put in the health and safety code, or our health regulations, I mean. And at the end of the day, the easiest path and the one that matches and what everyone else seems to be doing is an SUP process, because that does afford you that public access, it does afford people the opportunity to show up and comment on things. And then also, if there are special circumstances related to where this truck is going to be located, we can take that into consideration with conditions that we put on those SUPs. So really, what we're looking for, the team is ready to go. They're drafting it and working with legal or about to start working with legal if they haven't already done so. But we don't ever want to surprise you guys with the ordinance without having first briefed you. And this has been, this has been kind of on the back burner for a while because of delays and state law changes that we wanted to come back and have a touch point before we get your input before going forward.
I have a question that is just out of curiosity. What is the difference between a food trailer and a food truck? And why would we not allow a food trailer?
Yeah, so, yeah, in essence, it's the presence of an engine in one and not on the other, and that's how it was interpreted and read on the definition. The state code goes beyond those details and provides a definition that will apply to both, you know, a trailer that is pulled by another vehicle, as well as a mounted commercial kitchen on a truck.
So is the reason that we excluded it before is because it just was kind of not necessarily quite as mobiles?
That's the language, the language itself, it was, did inspire what we're trying to fix today. We think that there is something to it. The state law, that's required today that those vehicles remain mobile at all times, and of course, the ability of a trailer to be moved is not the same as a unit. So my thought, and I wasn't employed by the city back then, but the way that has been always read is that that makes a huge difference, the ability to move one versus the other, and that's how the language was included back in 2011.
Okay.
The language originally came from Dallas, and they were having issues with trailers, just no vehicle and just being stationary and no one to move.
Oh, okay.
This is why we have longevity is valued at the city.
That makes sense. Okay, now I understand.
I'm really supportive of this. I think these create some really great opportunities to build community, creates little pocket events, those types of things.
They do, they do. Have you been to the truck yard? I mean, it's vibrant, it's moving, it's just.
I'm glad to see this coming. I think this has been a long time coming. I'm of the opinion that these do not detract from the restaurants, these can make the restaurants improve.
Right.
Their food and their service, because I'm not going to go to a food truck unless the food is good. So I think it brings a lot of, I'd say vitality, community, everything to this place.
I will say, my main concern is, you know, I don't want to be putting a wine truck right next to the wine house. You know what I mean? I mean, those sorts of things, but if we're going to utilize the SUP process to do this, then I feel like that gives, that gives these surrounding business owners a chance to give their input, and so I'm comfortable, comfortable with this.
I think as you see them pick locations too, that will help us kind of go, oh, there's a demand or a need, there's some mixed use opportunities that we could put in here. Kind of like a pop-up park or something like that.
Right.
So, kind of, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job. All right, next up, we have I-35 corporate drive update, and David Sama is going to present. Thanks, guys. Appreciate the gingerbread.
It's awesome. Liz, though.
Well, still, my and Stacy are welcome.
Oh, it's good.
I have to be a road fan. We're going to cover where we currently are with corporate drive and I-35, obviously both very big road projects here in Lewisville, quite visible. And we're going to start with corporate drive segments two and three. Just going over some figures, the contract cost on segments two and three of corporate drive is a little bit over $33 million. The construction started this past February, so we're almost a year in. The contractors estimating in August 2026, complete segments two and three. And what they're working on today, they're building the big bridge over the Elm Fork Trinity River. They're still doing some road embankment and drainage work. They've completed the utility lines, so they've really made quite a bit of progress since, since last February. Isn't that glorious? Wow.
It is amazing.
What I've got here is a picture, the picture on the left is the Elm Fork Trinity River Bridge. That bridge is a half mile long. And as you can see, actually, we were just out there this past week. They've got all the beams on this main span of the bridge already done and it's set, and they're continuing to work on the piers and vents moving eastward toward Olpris Prairie Road. And then over here on the right is a smaller bridge that's closer to Railroad Street.
Can I pause there for a second? So I got the pleasure of going out there for a tour, and I will say, what was so impactful for me, not only was this company doing a great job and making amazing progress, but the, we always talk about our green centerpiece and getting better access to the green centerpiece, and this is such a beautiful, going to be an incredibly beautiful drive for Lewisville. You've got Railroad Park on one side, you've got a landfill that's closing that's going to turn over to a natural area and kind of the old borrow pits. It goes through Bob Hope's nose. I mean, it's going to be pretty exceptional, so.
And this is being done by Sunt, right?
Correct, yes. And the reason we have these photos is because Sunt Construction, just on all of their jobs, they usually do a monthly flyover with a drone and take photos, so we get to document our progress.
What date were these taken?
These were the latest ones, so they were probably taken maybe earlier this month or maybe even end of November. So they're probably less than a month old. And then moving on to corporate drive segments number five, which is further to the east, was after you cross the Trinity River. The cost of those segments is almost $30 million. That would begin construction in June of 2024, a little bit later, and the estimated completion on that segment is December of 2027. And the contractors cleared almost all the right of way, they're working on road embankment, and they're installing storm drainage and water mains. And here's some photos of those segments. As you can see, they're not quite as far along on these segments, but they're still making quite a bit of progress, and then, you know, visually you can see it's quite a huge project.
Right.
And they got, when we were out there Friday, they told us they've got, they've got two subcontractors out there working with them. Sunt themselves have 60 people on the job site.
60?
60.
Wow, okay.
Moving on to I-35, we've got our Main Street Interchange, which of course, everybody is familiar with, in current construction. Tech Start started construction on that back in June of 2023, and they've got an estimated completion date of November of 2026.
With the bridge alone?
Yeah, the intersection.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my gosh, we're in for it.
Anyway, and remember, I mean, part of the issue is that obviously they have to keep the road open, so they can only, they had to down a half the bridge at one time, and traffic had to remain on the other half. And then eventually, they'll build the new, one half of the new bridge, move the traffic over to the new bridge, and then demo the rest of the old bridge, and then come back and have to build the rest of the new bridge. So I mean, it's a complicated project. Just a couple of photos that were provided by Tech Start, the photo on the left is when they were tearing down. The photo on the left is when they were tearing down the north half of the Main Street Bridge. They did that at night, under closed traffic. And then the picture on the right is they're actually constructing piers for the new bridge.
Which way is that facing?
That should be facing south.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's south.
Facing south?
Yeah, but they're on the east, they're on the east side, south of Main Street.
Okay, by the hospital?
Yeah. This is the schematic for the Main Street intersection. As you can see, it doesn't, it includes not only the overpass, but includes quite a bit of the main lanes, a part of the managed lanes, and obviously, quite a bit of the service roads. You can see by the schematic that the footprint of I-35 holds the west right-of-way line fairly close, and it is being expanded to the east toward the hospital.
So is there a possibility that the bridge itself could be finished sooner than November 26?
Well, the bridge itself would be done before that, soon before that, but that's their next step, actually, is that they're, obviously, they're already doing piers for the first half of the new bridge. So that's their next phase, is to get that northern half of the new bridge completed and get the traffic moved over so they can start working on the south half of the new bridge. So they are focused on the bridge.
So we're at the worst of it with the bridge right now.
Right.
She wants hope, she just wants some...
Just give me something that I can, you know, keep my spirits up.
This just killed me.
I love the amount of hope you have. Yeah, Fox, Fox and Valley, great.
David, one question. Does it pinch down, like, go back to that map you just had? Is it, I thought it was supposed to be three lanes all across the service road. At Fox, is that, does it pinch down to two and then come back? Like, if you go to the bottom right, that looks like that's the Fox Bridge. So it goes down to two and then back to three?
Yeah, I mean, right now, we have two-lane service road south of Fox.
I thought it was supposed to be three.
I thought it was two lanes through, with turn lanes.
Okay. Yeah, but then we've got three lanes. The new service road that they're building is three lanes at some point.
Okay, okay.
At some point, after they build the ultimate I-35, all of it will be three lanes.
Yeah, so this is just a break at some point. We got this advanced a couple of years back before the rest of the full project is done.
We're so optimistic.
Well, I just remember it was far, far too.
You're so optimistic. It's okay.
Phase one is what AGL did several years ago. This is called Phase 1B. And 1B are the three interchanges, Main Street, Business 121, and Corporate. I think some of you have seen this before. We are going to do some lighting here at the Main Street Bridge. Here's the Fighting Farmers mural that we did here a while back, nighttime view and daytime view. Here's a couple of the other murals that are going to be built at Main Street. And of course, we got our Fighting Farmers Way sign that we funded here a few weeks ago. And the one thing I wanted to mention here is at one point, we were of the understanding that the signage on the main lanes, you know, indicating the exits was going to say Fighting Farmers Way, but it's not. It's just going to be, the actual signage on the main lanes, as you approach the ramp, is going to say Main Street, Route 1171.
They felt there was a, there might be a confusion related to, because Finding Farmers Way was just that stretch. They wanted to keep it Main Street.
That would have been nice, but just win one off.
So really, we're just going to have the sign on the bridge that says Fighting Farmers Way as you go under it?
We could fix that.
We could.
You would have to change all the way to Flartman.
We had to change the bridge name. That was...
Change all those businesses.
It's a whole other issue. We can jump off that bridge when we come to it.
Of course, we've seen this before. The bridge will be wide, it'll have the Texas U-turns, it'll have three lanes in each direction, and we'll have a multi-use path on one side, sidewalk on the other side. Moving on to Business 121 and Corporate Drive, they're doing the two interchanges, but because the two interchanges are so close together, they're also going to be restructuring the main lanes between the two intersections. So when TechStop finishes these projects, which they haven't started yet, but they will be shortly, we'll have ultimate I-35 section all the way from Business 121 down to Corporate Drive.
Wait, so they're going to start, they're going to start these two before they finish Main?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Fox Avenue.
Fox Avenue.
Everybody can't go Fox Avenue.
No, they can't. It'll still be open, it's just going to be...
Oh, it's going to be a nightmare.
And I'm going to be hearing more sirens.
Yeah, now, I'm certainly going to be able to keep Corporate Drive open if it's going to two lanes now. So Corporate Drive is probably going to be closed for a while once we start, but Business 121 will remain open at all times. This project, Business 121 and Corporate, they're going to let the project in January next month, and there's an estimated four-year construction schedule on it, so they're looking at a 2029 completion. And again, we pay for aesthetic improvements as well as the other interchanges. Here's the schematic of the Business 121 interchange. It's going to be more of a standard diamond with the frontage roads, with the frontage roads coming up to Business 121 rather than all those loops and odd, you know, angles. There won't be a flyover anymore either, but it'll be more of a standard diamond-style interchange. The other thing that's happening with the Business 121 is our realignment of Mill Street. Right now, Mill Street comes in at that odd angle very close to I-35, and it quite often gets backed up because the signals are so close. TechStop is going to realign south of Mill Street and move the intersection back so that it aligns with the Northwood Mobile Home Park driveway. And so we'll be able to have a four-way signal at that location, and that'll pull that signal back away from I-35. Again, Business 121 is in the Old Town District, so the murals are very similar to Main Street, the train and the car and the buildings. And again, this will be very similar to the intersection of FM 407, Business 121. At Corporate Drive, there's been some huge changes. Right now, Corporate Drive goes over I-35. When TechStop is finished, Corporate Drive will go underneath I-35. So they're basically going to be elevating I-35 and taking the bridge out at Corporate Drive and putting Corporate down to ground level. And again, they'll be doing away with all these jug handles, and you'll just have a normal service road and exits.
Can you pause there for a second? So on those jug handles, typically, the policy for the state is that they give the city the first right of refusal to purchase those properties from them. And sometimes, it makes sense from a landscaping standpoint. Here, you have a lot of businesses that just don't have great access, and I think this is going to be an immense opportunity from an economic development standpoint for us to work with businesses who want to assemble there and do something bigger and better or expand their businesses that are currently there.
It'll be good for there. And again, when TechStop is finished, the Corporate Drive will look very similar to FM 407. And the mural is down at Corporate Drive, a little bit different because it's in the park zone of the I-35 corridor, so the murals will be more park-themed. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
I had a question about mollards, but I'm going to save it.
Actually, can you talk to them about the pedestrian trail or pedestrian path on Corporate so they're aware of that? I meant the Corporate, I'm sorry, our Corporate Drive extension.
Our Corporate Drive extension. Okay, yeah. On Corporate Drive, we've included a 12-foot multi-use trail on one side of the roadway. It's 12 foot wide, the whole length. And then the opposite side will be a five-foot sidewalk, minimum a five-foot sidewalk. So we'll have that bicycle pedestrian connectivity all the way through.
That ties into what we have, the DCTA trail down by River Park, and so, yeah, it's great. David, thank you. I knew asking for this was going to create some anxiety for some folks here, but I think it's important that everybody got a quick update on what was going on. We have a lot of dirt moving in this city, and I know it creates some frustration, but I think knowledge helps people get through that, so.
I think it's unfair that I had to listen to that presentation when these things are sitting next to me right here, right feeding over here.
All right. If there are no other questions, we will go ahead and break from workshop, and we will reconvene in a regular session at 7:00 PM.
Good job.
All right, it is 7 o'clock, and we're going to call this meeting of the Louisville City Council regular session to order. We do have a quorum. First up on tonight's agenda is the invocation, and if you would all please stand and join me in a time of silent introspection and prayer. Councilmember Meredith, could you lead us in the pledges?
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Looks like I have some awards, and Rita Loke and Angela Lawallin, and then I've got Ignacio Mejia and Katie Yurialis. I'm sorry, I'm butchering a couple of names, so if I could have all y'all come on up here, because we're going to do these all at once. And Park Staff. Yep, Park Staff, too. Because y'all earned this. You need some spotlight here. So I have a few recognitions to give out here, and these are all from TRAPS, which, for those of you who don't know, that's the Texas Recreation and Parks Society. So this is the North Region Award Recognitions. So we brought home a bunch of hardware from TRAPS this year, so want to recognize the folks for that. So first up, we have Excellence in Park Design for Glory Park, and we want to commend the Louisville Parks and Recreation Department and Kim Lee Horn on receiving the Texas Recreation and Parks Society's North Region's Excellence in Park Design for Glory Park, Parque de la Gloria. Purpose of this award is to recognize a park development project which displays a high degree of professional design quality and recreation usage, and to encourage and expand cooperation between design professionals, parks and recreation professionals in the community. NITJ Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, on behalf of the City Council, extended congratulations to the Parks and Rec Department and Kim Lee Horn on December 16, 2024, for this well-deserved honor for designing a unique and special public space driven by community engagement that connects long, underserved community with a park within a 10-minute walk of their front doors. So that's the first one. Let's give them a hand for that. And then we also have Angela and Rita. I've got Angela here is our Advocate of the Year. Need to learn how to do that, that whole advocating thing. We got to get a whole bunch more people because that's that squeaky wheel work, and you do it nicely. You do a great job of it. We want to commend Angela on receiving the Texas Recreation and Parks Society's North Region's Advocate of the Year. She's a textbook definition of an earth warrior, park fan, and advocate. Angela is a Texas Master Naturalist, a veteran of the Parks Board, and our Blue Ribbon Committee, and a board member of the Friends of the Louisville Lake Environmental Learning Area. Angela recently retired from her role as a librarian at Central Elementary School and doubled down on her commitment to the children of Louisville by merging her passion for teaching with her appreciation of nature. Leveraging her relationships with the city, LISD, and UNT, she helped establish natural pathways, giving students the opportunity to collaborate on research and restoration projects with the goal of inspiring them to pursue environmental studies in college. She's a reliable and versatile volunteer. She continuously gives her time, talent, and resources to enhance the Louisville Park system and strengthen residents' connection to nature. NITJ Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, on behalf of the City Council, extend congratulations to Angela on December 16 for this well-deserved honor and give thanks for her service to the community. You had a chance to advocate, it was right there. All right, and then we also have, for Rita Loke, Loke?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you, Rita. She is our TRAPS North Region Part-Time Employee of the Year, and the Louisville City Council would like to commend Rita on receiving the Texas Recreation and Parks Society North Region's Part-Time Employee of the Year. This recognition honors the valuable role that part-time team members play in the provision of park and rec services in North Region communities. A longtime part-time environmental educator at Lila, Rita uses her knowledge as a Texas Master Naturalist and approachable demeanor to foster meaningful nature experiences for participants, particularly with outdoor camps for youth age 7 to 12. Her leadership in these camps has strengthened community engagement and created a staircase to stewardship by deepening participants' connection to the natural environment. This accomplishment reflects Rita's exceptional dedication to professional growth and her contributions to the Parks and Recreation field. NITJ Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, on behalf of the City Council, extend our congratulations to Rita on December 16, 2024. Thank you so much. And I'm looking at this, and we have two copies of the Glory Park one, so we're going to hand those to, we've got two different folks. I don't know how that works, but somebody will tell me. But regardless, folks, this is your team. They are being recognized statewide, nationally, for all of the great work they're doing. Let's give them a hand. Any words, any wisdom? Go Parks! Go Parks! Awesome. Do I need to stand over here? All right, thank you all. It's awesome. And for those of you questioning Parks, Parks are what makes cities great. They do, they do. We have an amazing team, an amazing, amazing team, so, all right. All right, next up on the agenda, public hearing. Item one, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending ordinance 0712-24-SUP in order to expand the special use permit granted thereby to allow two automobile repair minor uses on portions of an approximately 1.5871 acre tract legally described as Fairway Business Park Edition, Lot 9, Block A, located at 1504 Eagle Court, save for the portion of the tract specified by and subject to ordinance 0317-21-SUP Zoned Light Industrial District as requested by John Lamb of All Trades on behalf of AIP Eagle Court LLC, the property owner, case number 24-11-20-SUP. The property at 1504 Eagle Court was developed by All Trades for flexible office warehouse uses. Two special use permits have been previously approved for small-scale automotive repair uses where all work is done inside of the building and all cars are stored inside the building. The subject property, which is located at the end of the cul-de-sac, is suitable for a third automobile repair minor use since the site is surrounded by other office warehouses uses on three sides and a large electric utility substation to the north. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 7 to 0 on December 3, 2024. It's recommended that the City Council... It's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions. The public hearing on this is now open. I don't believe we have any public comment on this, do we have any questions?
I do have a question, because I just wanna make sure that I fully understand. So we've already approved an SUP for Detailer Automotive, and then another one last month for Texas Star Automotive, and this one is for two additional for this one for Liberty Hale?
This will be one additional for a complete total of three.
For a complete total of three, okay. I misunderstood, I thought we were approving two additional with this amendment, so it's...
This amendment...
That includes the one for Texas Star?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Richard, also for clarity, there's six other businesses, not automotive, but similar, HVAC and other types of compatible businesses already in this office park, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close, and a second. All those in favor signify by voting. Motion passes unanimously, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, city attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending ordinance number 0712-24-SUP in order to expand the special use permit granted thereby to allow two automotive repair minor uses on portions of an approximately 1.5871-acre tract legally described as Fairway Business Park Edition, Lot 9, Block A, located at 1504 Eagle Court, save for the portion of the tract specified by and subject to ordinance 0317-21-SUP, and Zone Light Industrial LI District, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, visitors forum, speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal and pertinent profane or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I have no public comment at this time, so we'll move on to item F, consent agenda. All following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless it's a council member or member of the public's request. For a member of the public to request removal of an item, speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no requests from the public for removing anything from our consent agenda, anything from council? If there is none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. I have a motion and a second, council please vote. Consent agenda is approved unanimously. Item G11, regular hearing, consideration of an alternative standard associated with ground-mounted equipment standards for Walmart on 20.9714 acres located at 190 East Ground Grove Road, FM 340 legally described as Lot 2, Block A, Campbell Ranch, Zone Light Industrial District, as requested by Juan Mariera of Kimley Horn on behalf of the owner, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, item 24-08-12-ALT STD. Walmart has been expanding its business operations to include drone delivery services. Drone delivery service is already available in Louisville at the 801 West Main Street Walmart location, provided by the Drone Operator Company, WING. ZipLine, another drone operation company, will be providing the service at the 190 East Round Grove, FM 340 Walmart location. Walmart is requesting an alternative standard to waive the screening requirement for ground-mounted equipment as ZipLine uses 21- and 29-foot-tall launch towers for their docking stations and launchpads. Staff is in the process of drafting supplemental standards for unmanned aircraft systems, also known as drones, which will address screening requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to 0 on November 19th, 2024, and is recommended that the City Council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, is available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the alternative standard.
Move to approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, consideration of resolution acknowledging the 2025 Republic Services cost of service rates for franchise solid waste and recycling services, in consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville by amending fees related to solid waste and recycling services. On November 16th, 2020, the City Council approved an exclusive franchise agreement for the collection of residential garbage refuse, yard waste, bulky waste, recyclables, containerized waste, and multifamily recycling with Allied Waste Systems Incorporated doing business as Republic Services of Louisville. Ordinance number 0277-11-ORD became effective January 1, 2021, establishing the terms of the agreement. Per the agreement, the cost of service rates are to be adjusted annually by the percentage increase in the garbage and trash index for the Dallas-Fort Worth area for the preceding 12-month period. Adjustments take effect on January 1 of the subsequent contract year. The current garbage and trash index for the Dallas-Fort Worth area, as published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, reflects an increase of 3.75%. Per the contract, cost adjustments shall not exceed 5% in any contract year and 15% in a four consecutive years. Therefore, Republic Services' cost of service rate will be increased by 3.60% effective January 1, 2025. It's recommended that the City Council approve the resolution and ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution and ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion, and I have a second, city attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the city of Louisville by amending fees related to solid waste and recycling services, providing repealer severability and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13, consideration of appointment of the city of Louisville representative on the Upper Trinity Regional Water District, UTRWD, Board of Directors to complete the term ending May 31st, 2025. Due to the departure of Assistant Director of Public Services, Kelly Rouse, in December of 2024, the City Council will need to consider a new appointment to fill the vacancy of the city's representative to the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. City staff recommends that Director of Public Services, Erin Russell, be appointed as the city's representative. Representatives on the UTRWD Board of Directors serve a term of four years, and the current term Kelly Rouse was serving in was set to expire effective May 31st, 2025. It is recommended that the City Council appoint the Director of Public Services, Erin Russell, to serve as a board member on the UTRWD Board of Directors as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I am pleased to move to appoint Erin Russell to serve as a board member on the UTRWD Board of Directors as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to 0. Erin, would you like to make any statement of fact for the record?
Our acceptance.
I'm just excited to serve.
Thank you so much for taking the time, it's important that we have great connectivity with our water districts, and we have a lot of options when we have to deal with water, so it's good to have that conversation, being at the table. Item 14, consideration of acceptance of the resignation of Akbar Alana, declaring a vacancy exists, and an appointment to place number two on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. A resignation was received from Akbar Alana, place number two on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Five applications have been submitted, meeting qualifications for service in this position. It is recommended that the City Council accept the resignation, declare a vacancy exists, and consider an appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption above. Counsel? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the resignation, declare a vacancy exists, and appoint Will Hawke to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second, any questions, discussion? None, I'll go ahead and vote. Motion passes 6 to 0. Item H, reports, reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I'm gonna start over with Councilmember Kelly, if that's okay?
Sure. I just wanna say, Fire Truck Santa Claus, again, not a big success this year, so thank you for the fire department, for all your help in making that happen. Think we're about done with the whole city already, which is a little disappointing for those who are gonna ask for it this week a little bit, but fantastic job, thank you for that.
Councilmember Green?
I was just gonna mention, since this is our last meeting, I believe, of the year, that I wanna wish everybody a happy and safe holiday, and New Year, and Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah, and all the things.
Councilmember Jones?
Well, since Councilwoman Green stole my... She beat me to it. Just a happy holidays to everybody, you know, Kwanzaa and Box Day to our neighbors to the north, enjoy your holiday, whatever you celebrate, it's a time for family. Whether you're grateful for them or they're a headache, they're your family, so enjoy your time. We'll finish off the year strong, and I'll see you guys again next year, we'll start all over again.
Councilmember Kate?
Ditto, and ditto, and I would just like to add that during this holiday season, and we're all stressed and everything, just relax, practice the pause.
Thank you. Councilmember Meredith?
Yeah, I don't think we had a chance to thank staff for the holiday stroll, I think with the conditions, I think everything went off well, the drone show was fantastic, so I think we need to do that again, but I appreciate everything what happened with the stroll. It wasn't the parade we wanted, but we got everything else in, I think. Some library activities for the week, December, destress routines, age 13, 18, Tuesday, December 17th, 4 to 6, Wednesday, December 18th, 4 to 6, Bennett Program Room, no registration required, storytime at Dragon Park for families with children of all ages, Friday, December 20th, 9 to 9:30 at Dragon Park, no registration required, and English Conversation Hour, Friday, December 20th, noon to 1:00 P.M., Crawford Meeting Room, no registration required, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I have a number of items for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, Children's Magic Show with C.J. Johnson on December 17th, presented by the Louisville Masonic Lodge. Acoustic jam sessions every Friday evening, as usual, 6 to 9, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. Number of activities, there is a neighborhood grant workshop will be on December 17th, and bodyweight boot camp presented by Case Cortez, Thursdays on Wayne Ferguson Plaza through December 19th, so I guess that ends soon. Then exhibitions right now, the Gift of Art and Art Sale Exhibition presented by the city of Louisville, going through the 20th, and Small Gifts presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville through December 27th. And that is all.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, city secretary, Richard?
Mayor, city council members, park fans, just a reminder that we have started our monthly community beautification events that happen on the third Saturday of every month. If you haven't been enticed by our latest video by Chris Chastain, to register, you still have time to do that at playlewisville.com. We'll be at Thrive Nature Park, eradicating that invasive species privet, so if y'all wanna come out and help us with that, you can. Just a reminder, Thrive in Lila will be closed on Christmas and New Year's Day, but we do have the first day hike at Thrive Nature Park, and you can register, learn more about that if you wanna get out there and just get outside and kick off the New Year in the great way.
Awesome, thank you.
I do have the lake report, so we are holding strong at 85.3%, 518.81 feet.
Thank you.
Just wanna wish everybody happy holidays.
Chief?
Yeah, just wanna report this Thursday, we'll be doing our annual Shop with a Cop event, it's gonna take place at Target, and much of the kids are gonna meet at the Next Steps Church right about 4:30, and then they'll be out at the Target between about 5:15 and 6:15 P.M. We'll have a bunch of police officers out there volunteering with them as well, so...
So we'll see a bunch of what's going on at Target on social media?
Yeah, that's okay, that's fine, it'll be Santa with the police this time.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. City manager? Just a quick update, there was a Centennial newsletter that has been created, so if you are interested in learning about the Centennial and all the events coming up this next year and wanna be in the know, just head over to the city website and search for Centennial, you'll find the newsletter there. In fact, you'll find a ton of great newsletters that can keep you in the loop on all sorts of activities. And for those of you who are out there, find something to do with people, build some community. The holidays get really lonely, and unfortunately, I think social media and some of the other things that we deal with in our day-to-day world have created a lot more loneliness, so, you know, reach out to that friend you haven't talked to in a while, reach out to that neighbor, this is the season for that, so, you know, take it under advisement, you need to step up, I think we all do, and we can make things a little bit better around here. So with that, I do have a couple of closed session items, so in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.074 Personnel, City Secretary Thomas Harris III, Section 551.072 Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087 Economic Development, as well as Section 551.071 Consultation with Attorney, we are going to move into closed session. Oh, consultation with attorney is... Is also related to item J1. Thank you. Counsel, we're gonna reconvene back into regular session, is there any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I move to table item J1 until the January 6, 2025 meeting.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So there's no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned. 9:58. Nine fifty-eight.